You know what, I was gonna come in in Washington.
One, I would like to call to order the March 11th Board of Education meeting. Can I have someone read approval of our agenda?
Sure, I move that the agenda Monday, March 11th, Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a roll call, please.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Laberty?
Aye.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
President Humble's.
Aye. Next, we're gonna move to our public hearing, and tonight we are holding six public hearings. Public! Oh my goodness!
You can slide down to this one if you need to.
I agree. I have to do it.
I'm sorry, you broke my rhythm.
We were down nine at halftime, in case you're wondering.
Okay, did you win?
No, we're down nine.
Okay, so you're...
Yeah, not good.
Back up to the regular order then, sorry.
So we're gonna move you back up in just a second. So now, we're gonna go back to the public hearing, and we have six. And we will take them all at the same time, so I will be reading each one of them. The first one is for the permanent easement at Washington, window and door replacement at Metro, masonry repair at Kennedy, track and field improvement at Kingston, ADA restroom upgrades at Polk and Franklin, and lease extension for the cell tower located at Kingston property. Board Secretary Day, have you received any correspondence related to any of tonight's public hearings?
I have received no correspondence written on any of these six public hearings for tonight.
At this time, we will open the floor for those who would like to address the board regarding any of the hearings. Do we have anyone that would want to address the board? Do I ask for any comments from the board at all?
Nope, not this time.
Since there are not any comments, the hearing, the public hearing, is closed. Next, we will move to the superintendent's reports. Take it away. Who are you?
Yeah, thank you.
Dr. Buck.
Yeah. Thank you, President Humble, so in case you're... So I had a chance to play basketball, the staff versus students. Did you ever get to do this?
No.
No, okay. So, I originally committed to the staff versus students basketball game at Jefferson. It was supposed to be tomorrow at 4:30, and then with weather things, PSAT and ACT got moved to tomorrow, so the game got moved to tonight. So the board graciously allowed me to go play for a while, so we made it to halftime, and then I was hoping to stay the whole game, but the halftime was long, so... Anyway, so, thanks for your patience, everyone. And I was one for one and one for two from the free throw line, so that felt good. I was in the book, couple rebounds, yeah, felt good, yeah, yeah, it felt like I was alive. So March is Women's History Month, and students at Metro High School have been busy with a community project. Art students were invited by the African-American Museum to create original door cover posters celebrating the month. The posters were installed recently at the African-American Museum and will be on display until the end of March. This is just another inspiring and creative way our students are collaborating with partners in our community. This past week, families of students who rely on school bus transportation received exciting news about the adoption of our transportation tool. Cedar Rapids Community School District is excited to introduce a new bus tracking and estimating time of arrival, or ETA, app for parents and students called Safe Stop. Parents and guardians can register their students in the app or by visiting www.safestopapp.com and gain access to their child's bus's ETA. We're very excited about this new opportunity available to families to track the status and location of their child's bus. Congratulations goes out to Jefferson High School's Academic Decathlon Team. This year's team captured another state title, and if you're counting, that is 19 in a row. The team scored 44,184 points out of a possible 60,000. Academic Decathlons is an academic competition where students study curriculum based on a common theme. This year's theme was the 1960s. CRCSD was well represented overall, with Kennedy High School taking third and Washington taking fourth in the statewide competition. Jefferson will represent Iowa at the national competition in late April, I think that's up in Minneapolis. Congratulations to everyone involved. CRCSD and community partner DC Taylor Company are hosting a future-ready career fair. This is open to any class of 2019 graduate who may still be researching and exploring their post-secondary options. More than 74 vendors will be onsite and many employers who support continuing education training either through the on-the-job training and certifications, credentials, and/or tuition reimbursement. The fair will take place from 10:00 AM to noon on Thursday, March 28th, at the Kirkwood-Lynn Regional Center. And finally, I'd like to offer a couple reminders. Our monthly TED-style talk called "Schooled" is this Wednesday at 5:00 in the Whipple Auditorium at the Cedar Rapids Downtown Library. And spring break is next week, March 18th to 22nd, and hopefully warm weather is ahead. So that is it.
We hope so, too. Thank you. Any board reports?
President Humble's, I do have one again. I was able to visit schools, was able to visit Lincoln, Polk, Taylor, and Polk. I'll have really exciting programming and things going on. If anyone wants any more information, I welcome them to contact me.
Thank you. Any other?
Legislative reports. A busy week at the Capitol last week because it was the first of funnel dates. Bills had to go through, approved through one committee in both the House and the Senate in order to be eligible for debate on the full House or full Senate. And so, there was a mad scurry to get some bills pushed through committee and are still eligible for votes. Of interest, Senate File 445, ELL waiting, would move the waiting for English-language learners from a .22 to a .295. This was in, would help increase allocations working with those. Senate File 372 is a voucher bill. It has been rewritten and become very narrow in scope, but it still is a diversion of public funding into some voucher programs. It is alive in the Senate, and I think we need to keep track because over a period of time, we're talking about a redirection of over $300 million away from our funding that would be accessible to public education, regular public education. The Charter School Bill, H in the House, HS 213, did not get House Education Subcommittee approval to move forward, so it died due to the funnel. SAVE is on, it's in the House, it's House File 425. It is on the House Calendar Waiting for Action. In the Senate, it is still in the Senate Ways and Means Committee. It has been assigned to a Subcommittee, Feinstein, Dawson, and Hockam, those senators, and will continue to track to see, but it, again, we, the general feeling is it will move forward yet this session. A couple of other things of note, entered in, gone, survived the funnel is House File 563 that would allow, provide a student liaison to school boards. And House File 349 deals with Ray Dunn testing. So, those of, each of those, I think we should continue to monitor and take a look at and could affect us one way or the other.
Thank you. Any other, any other reports?
President Humble's, if I could add on to that, if there's anyone that would like to express an interest in being involved with that legislation, you can go to the UEN website or the IASB website, and there are forms there, form letters that you can send your legislators.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to communications, delegations, and petitions. And I'd like to remind those who have requested to address the board to step to the podium when your name is called, please state your name and address, and you will be given five minutes for your remarks. And Board Secretary Day will serve as your timer and inform you when your time is up. So the first person is Eurice Colbert.
My name is Eurice Colbert, and I live at 7122. I'm a teacher in the District of City. I received the announcement that the district insurance will be revised for several bargaining groups. My first reaction was, timing, it's time to do something different. Know that our parent educators have been working through the bargaining process to ease the distribution, district contributions, excuse me, for health insurance. For them and other unrepresented district employees, the potential change for allocating 650 for full-time employees is a definite win. As an employee who takes the district insurance, I'm excited about the idea we may increase the number of employees who will enroll in the district insurance plans. I realize the intent is to keep, sorry, excuse me, to helping decrease our insurance costs over time and possibly increase the types of insurance offered in our insurance plans. Progress in this area is always welcome unless it negatively impacts employees. The proposed change for new teachers is different than the current flex dollar structure for veteran teachers. According to IFRS regulations, for insurance spending to count towards retirement, teachers must be treated with the same within the bargaining unit. Whether a teacher takes insurance or not, IFRS treats the flex dollar as income. Under the new proposal, not to offer flex to new employees, this becomes a loss at $4,200. This means that my high five years reduce my IFRS pension by more than $2,500 each year of my retirement. That's a huge hit. This idea to redesign the district contribution for health insurance will negatively impact my group. I strongly encourage you to reconsider this approach. Thank you.
Next, Thomas Waller.
I live at 1844 First Avenue Northwest. I'm the stepfather of a Cleveland Elementary School student. I'm a veteran of the US Army 10th Mountain Division, recipient of the National Security Director's Award, and owner and president of Afghan Contracting Company. I did not take this decision to come in front of you and speak today very lightly, but accountability dies in darkness. On March 7th, my wife received a phone call from Andrea Plale, the counselor at Cleveland Elementary, to inform her of the physical assault on our son ES while he was in the fifth-grade classroom. My wife dropped everything she was doing and picked our son up from the school to ensure his physical safety, as well as investigate what transpired in the classroom. He reported to us that he was being repeatedly kicked in the lower leg, and the student-teacher in his classroom observed the assault and put a stop to it. This is not the first time our son has been assaulted at the school or in his classroom. As parents, we have addressed violence directed towards our son on two previous occasions with his teacher, Sherri Kopecchi, Andrea Plale, his student counselor, and Denise Pape, the principal of Cleveland Elementary. Upon questioning, our son informed his mother that he has been subjected to violence from this student on a daily basis and has gone to the steps of stopping reporting it to Ms. Kopecchi due to the lack of effects on the situation. Allow me to repeat this very simply. Due to the failures of adults at his school, my son just accepts being punched, kicked, slapped, and threatened. As per my son's 504 plan, we are to receive weekly check-ins from Ms. Kopecchi regarding our son's challenges and accomplishments. We have not received consistent emails since winter break, and in the emails that we have received, there is no mention of our son being subject to physical violence in the classroom. At approximately 3:40 PM on March 7th, I arrived at Cleveland Elementary to address the situation with Sherri Kopecchi, Andrea Plale, and Denise Pape. Ms. Kopecchi and Ms. Pape were not present at the school and had substitutes for their duties. The meeting was conducted with me, Andrea Plale, and the substitute principal. During this meeting, I asked for the policies and procedures regarding physical violence, bullying, and targeted actions, an action plan to mitigate and stop the attacks on my son, and an accountability matrix. The intent of this initial meeting was to find a way to fully maximize the limited resources available and apply them to the situation in an effective manner to solve the issues of my son being physically violated. The individuals present at this meeting were unable or unwilling to provide me with policies and procedures, develop an action plan to stop the attacks, or provide me with an accountability matrix for who is responsible for allowing my child to continue to be assaulted at this school. All parties present at the meeting, recognizing this impasse, concluded that a follow-up meeting with Ms. Plale, Ms. Pape, and Ms. Kopecchi should be conducted. Before I left the meeting, a follow-up meeting was scheduled for 1:30 PM on March 8th by Denise Pape. At 5:25 PM on March 7th, my wife received an email from Denise Pape stating that her supervisor would be present at the meeting on March 8th. This indicates the level of importance of this meeting and that the principal would even request her supervisor be present. At the March 8th meeting, present were Denise Pape and her supervisor. Absent were Andrea Plale and Sherri Kopecchi. We addressed that the weekly emails as per our son's 504 plan were not being conducted, a safe learning environment was not being provided, and that our son would be, or our son was reporting physical attacks to faculty. However, Ms. Plale, Ms. Kopecchi routinely state they're unaware of these reports. This is a complete breakdown of accountability, responsibility, and communication. Furthermore, at 9:31 PM on March 7th, prior to the follow-up meeting on March 8th, my wife and I received Facebook friend requests from David Tan. Now, I don't know David Tan, we do not have mutual connections through any social media platforms, nor do we have any professional or educational links. I presented Ms. Pape with a screenshot of the request from David Tan. Ms. Pape feigned ignorance of how Facebook works and claimed to not know David Tan or the woman in his profile picture. Upon further questioning, Ms. Pape was able to identify Andrea Plale as that woman. Ms. Pape also identified David Tan as Ms. Plale's fiancee when presented with incontrovertible proof of an existing social relationship between David Tan and Ms. Plale. Cleveland Elementary was previously in the news on December 14th for bullying and an action of faculty and staff. The conditions of this current incident are very similar to the ones that was in the news.
Mr. Waller, excuse me, your time is up. Thank you.
I have written copies if anyone would like.
I'm sure we can take that in follow-up information. Thank you. Next, we will move to our consent agenda. As part of our consent agenda, do any board members have items they would like polled for separate discussion and/or voting considerations?
President Humble's, I would like BA-19-008/11.1 polled for a separate vote, please.
Which one is that?
That open enrollment, BA-19-008/11. Correct?
Correct.
Anything else? So, Laura, I want to make sure that I'm doing this correctly, so we will vote and we will poll the BA.
We'll pull, yeah, we'll pull the open enrollment denial for separate consideration, yeah.
So we need a motion to accept the consent agenda due to the personnel report and the BA-19-284 permanent easement. Have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as described and poll the open enrollment denial BA-19-008/11 for a separate vote.
Your second?
My second.
Do we do a roll call? Please, roll call, please.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Laberty?
Aye.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
President Humble's.
Aye. Now, next, we'll do a separate vote on BA, I'm sorry.
The open enrollment denial.
The open enrollment denial.
And that'll just be a voice vote tonight.
Okay. All in favor, is that correct?
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm sure, I'm not doing this right.
That's okay.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
Question about abstain?
Question, oh.
I think Jennifer would like it on the record that she's abstaining.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will move to administration. We have the Master Facility Planning Oversight Committee, and we'll have a report from Dave Nicholson and John Galbert. And this is an information item only. I thought you were leaving. I was like, you gotta come back here. Yeah.
Sorry, John.
No, no problem. Good evening. We have a few members here from the Master Facility Plan Oversight Committee, and they're the committee that oversees and approves all of our projects prior to coming for board approval. So we have Co-Chair Mike Dawson here to give us a brief update.
Good evening. I just want to recognize the other two members of our committee, Co-Chair Pat Loffler and Sue Shanklin. The, our mission at the Master Facility Oversight Committee is to monitor and report to you, the Board of Education, the district's compliance with the plan, the, as funded by multiple sources, including, not limited to the SAVE dollars and the PEPOL. The committee will oversee the district's commitment to use $40 million in SAVE funds for property tax relief, and I believe we're coming close to the end of that now. The committee will provide counsel to district administration to help promote within the Cedar Rapids Community District activities related to this charter whenever possible or wherever possible. And I think this is our main role. We proved it time and time again over, over the course of the history of this committee, and we'll get into the history of the committee in just a few seconds here. Our commitment, we will represent the community to ensure the funds are invested as intended. That was one of the big selling points of the Oversight Committee many years ago in a couple of the elections. We're gonna monitor projects to ensure they are completed on time and on budget, and that's happened multiple times, particularly in the first 10 years. Provide recommendations and assurance that will keep our schools' progressive learning environments that are aligned with the current advancement in education. As you all know, I'm not preaching to the choir here, but things are changing in education, always have and always will, and it's becoming more challenging to keep up with it. The committee history, as you can see by the highlights there, the bond oversight, the silo oversight, the master facility plan oversight, and the SAVE Oversight Committee. So it's all been, that's where it started, committee-wise, oversight committee-wise. But the process really started back in 1996 with the Facility Study Group, where people from all schools met and toured all the schools, along with teachers and administration, and started prioritizing things that needed to be upgraded and fixed in the schools. And that's where it all started, and that's been, you can do the math, 23-some years And what that group was doing was trying, setting out a, something for the, to do a silo vote on, and the original vote failed. And therefore, it got scaled back with the help of the Chamber of Commerce at that time. The bond oversight, or the bond bill, the bond vote, pardon me, came into being, and one of the, the, one of the selling points was for the community was to have the Bond Oversight Committee. And that's where this committee has its roots. It was instrumental in passage of the bond vote. The community values the oversight that we provide, and the district values the trust the Cedar Rapids community is shown in the Oversight Committee, I'm sure you all do. Current committee members, as you can see, there's a broad variety there. We have over an 80% participation rate. The talent on the committee is very extraordinary, and they've helped the district in numerous And one of the things that always transcends the committee is that we're currently working with our fourth superintendent, and there's been 24 school board members since the Bond Oversight Committee started. So, as you can see, time passes, the faces change, but the purpose is still there, and that's very important. Key accomplishments, as we alluded to earlier, the first 10 years, we really were able to take advantage of the economy, because it was hit, you know, the economy slowed down, so we were able to, because of our funding, we would be able to get projects done under budget, and that, when they were done under budget, that allowed us to do extra projects, such as, you can see them listed out there. And that was, that was important for future areas, where we don't have to go back and assign, we can continue to build on what we had. A good man once told me, "A budget is made and advanced and revised quarterly." He was, his name was Emmett Sherman, and he was one of the co-chairs here, and he was, he was always pushing to remind us to look at tomorrow and not just today, and that everything's fluid, and we have to maintain our flexibility. Some of the key accomplishments, and you probably are all used to it by now, but geothermal, when we first put those in the buildings, was a huge topic. And it's lent itself tremendously to student learning, number one, and to help with the And if you ask any of the teachers and students what some of these facilities updates has done to help them do their job, I, I don't know if you would be amazed, but it continually amazes me the different answers they give, so. And it's been an integral part of our oversight function to have some of our meetings on project sites so that we can get feedback, and we try and do that as time allows, but time doesn't Continuing on with some of the key accomplishments, I just want to draw out the second item there, the Kingston Stadium. That was in the original 10-year projects. It got added to the original 10-years projects after multiple discussions, and it was, it was a big topic then. And putting that turf in was, has been instrumental in, not just for three teams playing on the same surface, I don't know how many other districts in the state of Iowa do that, but I want to wager there's probably not very many. I want to wager there's probably not very many of them. But there, it's not just three schools, but three schools' football teams, three schools' soccer teams, three schools' bands, it goes on and on and on. So, you know, it takes a lot of wear and tear, and now, we're 10 years down the road or so on that field, and we're looking at replacing it now, and it was on your consent agenda tonight, so. I think it's, it was a wise choice at that time, and it continues to be a wise choice now. This is the crux of our presentation here. Look at these 100-year-old schools that we have made an investment in. There were people just like you and I that came up with the idea, had, went out and sold it to the community, and they stood the test of time. 100 years or more in school buildings is phenomenal, and probably extraordinary. But, you know, is that building the right building for the next 100 years? And that, ladies and gentlemen, is part of your charge, and our charge also, to support you in what your decisions are for that. The, you know, schools are gonna look tremendously different in the next 50, 75, 100 years. You know, I like this one, think of distance learning. You know, when did that been nice these last snow days and so, and, so. Our committee supports the district being visionary, thinking out of the box, expect, think, trying to find people that can help them figure out what's, what's needed in the next 50, 75, 100 years. And the district has to tell the story to the Cedar Rapids community. It's not just enough to sell it to the school district community, but to the whole Cedar Rapids community. That's important, because that's, that's where the support is too. You don't have to have a kid in school, in the Cedar Rapids Community School District, to benefit from what these schools provide, because it may be a coworker or, or an employee of yours, so. We're planning for classroom needs for today right now, and again, 50, 75, 100 years from now, we need to continue to think about that. Our challenge, what does a classroom need to look like? Our answers, our ancestors answered that question, and I hope that you guys can continue to answer those questions. And I say that they were good stewards of our school district, and I believe you and we are good stewards, and we need to continue that, and I believe we are up to the challenge. And lastly, it's all about the future generation of our children. The canvas is ready for all of us to continue that vision. So I, I highly encourage you, again, to be artists, to be creative, not to, I, I know we're not stuck in the bud, but, but sometimes it's hard to, it's hard to get past the status quo. Anyway, that's everything that I have. Do you have any questions for us?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you, because there's some history that I learned here, and to the committee for partnering with the school district, because we do have a vision, and it's nice to have the support and guidance that you provide us, so I thank you for that.
Yep.
And your committee.
Yes, yes.
Well, I thank you, President Humble. I was gonna say the same, that this community certainly has been supportive in my tenure of our public schools, and, and you, you and your committee have helped to ensure that, that public trust, and, and we appreciate it. If I could, I would, it wouldn't do much good, but triple your salary, I know it's a, it's a big.
Yeah, it's good, you know, hey.
That might bring the news media out.
Well, I don't know, Tracy brings us these little treats every now and then to our meetings.
He does.
Yeah, they're just laid out on the table, ready for us to, you know, it's at the end of the day, we've been working hard all day, and we're putting in a little overtime, so.
And I appreciate your comments. I was at the, at the Arthur Centennial Celebration, and heard a little bit of history, and when that was built, hard to believe, but that was on the outskirts of Cedar Rapids.
Yes, yeah.
There was nothing around, and, so it took a little bit of fortitude.
Yes.
Probably a great deal of fortitude on the school board to say, what, you're gonna build a, a building there. So, I appreciate your, your comments about, you know, we have to have some foresight, we have to be able to, to look forward the future, and it may not always be tremendously publicly.
Popular.
Yeah, appreciated, I guess. But we have to really do that. So, we appreciate your comments and your work, and the committee. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Thanks, Susan. Yeah, one, one thing I was just gonna say too, is that, and Mike mentioned this, was the $40 million that we committed to property tax relief, and Mike, you know, you're right on the mark, we've, we've committed to that, you're helping us be held accountable for that, and I think, again, if SAVE passes again, that that's something that this board needs to, to continue to look at.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next is approve a publication, scheduling of a public hearing for fiscal year 2019-20, Dave Nicholson, and this is a voice vote?
Right, listen, I think Dave's got a couple of things to make us.
Do you have a couple of things, yeah?
Yes, I have a nice little presentation to go through. And first of all, thank you, President Humble, the Board of Education, Dr. Buck. I'm pleased to be before you, the board, tonight, to at least give a, our first touch point on the budget for FY 2020. And, and this will be one of two, and we'll actually have the public hearing next board meeting, if you set the public hearing tonight. So, kind of, whoop, going the wrong way. There we go. So, we got, the process for the budget is, we have to actually have it certified by April 15th, and then we also, in our district, we pull to get to the budget document, a line item budget, that is presented to the board and adopted in June, and that's a culmination of any, from this point on, any changes, anything that we need to modify, that happens all the way up till we actually bring it to the board in June. And that document used to be a three-ring binder, and now, I believe, it's on the website, and that will, and actually has about six or seven years worth on the website, so our community will be able to take a look at that and see the history as well, so. Oh dang, going the wrong way. So, our, for highlights for FY 20, our preliminary web revenues for all funds, it's a culmination of all of our funds, is $289,647, and then our expenditures are a little bit less, is $285,35,000, so. And the good news is, we're publishing a tax, a flat increase in our taxes, no increase for next year, at $15.07. And big driving force with taxes, a big component of that is taxable valuations, and this year we experienced about a 2.13% increase in taxable valuations. But, so, our levy typically could have potentially gone down, but it's not a, that's a pretty flat increase in taxation. And the other kind of driving force is enrollment, because a lot of enrollments will drive, actually will drive your general fund taxation up a little bit, just because of how the formula works. And we actually had a reduction this year in our enrollment. And so, the, all the revenues is based on our 2.06% supplemental state aid that the legislator approved, along with the $5 per pupil inequity increase that they have, legislator approved. So that all rolls into this budget, and so, our new money, it's not 2.06, if you do, we had 166 decrease in our enrollment, which equates to new money at 1.15%, but on top of that, we also had a increase out for open enrollment, which lowered that number from 1.15 to 1.8%. So, that's what this budget is based on, is really, the net effect of about 0.8% to our budget, you know, for next year. All right, so our levy, I mean, you can, FY 10, there was a, that draw fell off, we do a 10-year history, and FY 10 dropped off, and that would have been much lower, and we had a pretty big jump into our tax levy at that point in the year, because that would have been after, on the heels of the 10% across-the-board cut, and we actually had increased our cash reserve levies, which then increased our levies. But if you go across the board here, we're pretty flat here, 15, $15.17, you know, pretty flat there. Then we were flat for the last, previous three years, at 1538, then we dropped last year to 1507, and we're flat for again for next year. So that's, it's always good when you can keep the levy flat, so. Cash reserve levy trends. Cash reserve levy, first of all, I want to point out what our maximum is. Our maximum for FY 20, there is a legislative maximum that you can actually do, which is 11.6 million, is what the max that we can actually do for cash reserve levy. And for FY 20, it's at 10.8, so it's below our maximum, and you can see it has fluctuated over time. There is a point in time here in FY 13, you would have seen our fund balances drop significantly. I think there's a conscious effort to try to bring up fund balance, and that's why our cash reserve levy jumped up at that point in time. And so, in FY 20, the main driving force on that piece, we actually have, our special deficit is a good, big component of that number as well for FY 18, FY 20, is a deficit that carried over from last year, and we levy for it in the current year. Now, how do we compare Inland County? And one of the things that's important to note is, this is net of income surtax. So, because not everybody in Inland County has income surtax, there are some, we do, but like Lynn Mar College Community does not have income surtax, so we'd like to pull together what it would look like if we did not have an income surtax, because I think that's a better comparison for the community. And even when we take that into account, we're the third lowest tax rate in Inland County. And that has been historically, kind of where we have fell for a number of years now, and so I think that's a good position for us to be in. So that is a net impact, that's $16.31. If we did not have the, and this was for FY 19, the current year, so if we did not have the income surtax, our levy would have been from 1507 to 1631. Valuations, I kind of mentioned that a little bit ago, our valuations, it's based on, that's a big driving force on how our levies look. And so, our valuations went up this year, but only about 2.13%, and so, we're, went from 1554 to 15, I mean, $5,660,000, is where our taxable valuation is for the year, so. Unspent balance and fund balance, these are kind of two main metrics that school business officials will look at, and a lot of boards across the state look at. Unspent balance is what we legally can spend, and our fund balance is just that, what our fund balance is. But, as you can see, we have a, when we look at an FY 18, we ended the year at 15, just over $15 million in unspent balance, but we had a fund balance of 33, almost $34 million in fund balance, over double, you know, where we were sitting. And we are expecting that to grow a little bit this year, but you can see, going in FY 20, we're budgeting that to come down some, and to 15.72 million unspent balance and about 30 million for fund balance, is kind of what we're projecting. But you can look back, and it was FY 13 and 14, there was low. You can see that, where those are kind of scary low numbers. And there was, I have to commend both Steve Graham, and the board, and Dr. Buck, and all the staff, and the unions, to help us get to the point where we're at today, and the strong financial picture we're at today, because it wasn't, wasn't for all that hard work, it would be, you know, much tougher spot to be in, coming in, especially new. Things are just so great financially here, it's been nice to come into a good, strong position, and hopefully we can continue to keep it that way. Dave, could you just, or you're probably gonna do it now, never mind. Yep. So, this is the same slide, but in percentages basis, okay? So, instead of in dollars, we're looking at percent. So, unspent balance, we're looking at FY 18, we're at 7.32%, and our goal, so the goal, the board has set between a 5 and 10% goal, and the last projected, you know, last three years, we've been in that mode, and we're, you know, we're projecting, still be in that in FY 20 as well. And so, that's an area that we need to make sure that we're mindful of that, because one of the things that, you know, when you look at fund balance, those numbers matter to bonding companies, when you're looking at your bond rating, those numbers matter, and you want to make sure you keep that high enough to maintain our AA3 bond rating that we have today, and that's, those are the things that we need to stay on top of. What are our next steps? The next steps, we have to publish, certify our, well, tonight, we're actually, would ask the board to set our public hearing, and that will actually be on April 8th, and then, and we'll hold a public hearing at the next board meeting, and then we will, there's something else that we haven't really touched on tonight, it's a, we actually have to look at our current budget. And typically, at this meeting, you would have also set a public hearing for a budget amendment. I'm gonna do things a little bit differently this year, I'm, I'm gonna ask the board to hold off on that. We have some things in, that are coming forward in the future here, that we don't know, like when Coolidge, some of the expenses, if we, the SAVE does pass, there could be some expenses that fall on this year's books. I would like to wait to know what the timeline of those expenses would be. And we also have some other unknowns that we would like to wait to do the budget amendment until we have some more information. And we actually have till May 31st for the board to adopt the budget amendments. So, this way, we can have the board approve a, a publishing of a public hearing on April 22nd, and, and have the actual public hearing on May 13th for the budget amendment for FY 19. And of course, one of the other things we're looking at is SAVE area, you kind of mentioned that right now, it's out of, it's waiting to be debated in the House, in the Senate, it's in the Ways and Means right now, and so, that's, we're keeping our eyes on that. And of course, we're gonna continue to look at modifying any numbers that we have to from now until June, as we get the budget, final line item budget document together for the board. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Uh, some clarifications, I guess, and just, this is more for public. One of the things are on the slide with the cash reserve and the unspent balance, I think you briefly mentioned it, but just to, to restate that, the unspent balance we have spending authority on, that we could spend today. Even though we have the cash, the levy, cash levy reserves, that we can touch, so it's just sitting in the bank, we do get some interest off of it, but we can't touch it. And with the same token, we'll go back and look at the, we look at how we rate as far as the levy goes across the metro area in Inland County, we're relatively low, but we have some needs, you know, we would like to see more money into that general fund. Because we're controlled by the allowable growth, where we can't, even going out and, and increasing the levy won't help us, because we don't have spending authority to spend it.
You're absolute.
We could do it to increase the, our cash, cash reserve levy, we could increase that to a point, but again, that doesn't give us spending authority, doesn't give us, do us any good as far as our, our general fund. So, people saying, well, you know, I don't mind paying a little bit more property tax, you know, I know we have some needs, it doesn't help us, we can't, we won't have spending authority, we're controlled by the state.
Yeah, that's a good point, Gary. We are, you know, we would love to be able to just say, yeah, we can just raise our levying to generate more dollars. levy to generate more dollars. But we have that, the formula, budget formula, that really dictates how much we can actually spend. And that's where the unspent balance, as Gary was mentioning, we have just over 15, it projected to go to about 17. But, so yeah, we do have the funds and we, but we don't have the legal authority to spend all of that. We would love to be able to do that, but we don't have the legal authority to do that. And that's, and that's one of the things that in the funding formula, I've tried to equalize things across the state. And it's, it's one of those things that I think there, you need to have a limit because otherwise some schools could raise a lot more monies to spend than others. So there's an equalization piece to it, an equity piece to it, and, and we are limited by that. And we're also limited by how much cash reserve levy that we can levy as well. And so that fluctuates, that's a formula as well to determine what that is. But that, that's a control that's in place that prevents some people to, you know, especially those communities that have a pretty high tax base per pupil, they could generate a lot of money, you know, and, but there's, there's controls there. And so you made a great, a valid point there, so.
But those, the fund balance and the unspent balance, I mean, they're in the right direction. They're, they're coming back together.
Correct, coming back together.
In that range, yeah, yeah. And that's just not an arbitrary range, the 5% to 10% goal. That was intentional so that we had that cushion, right?
Correct, yeah.
You know, my second year on the board, we had this big flood and all of a sudden we were really glad to have some of that at the point it was.
Right. Yeah, you do, and you could send, if you go back, you could see how quickly it can turn on you, you know? And so you do need to have a cushion as well.
You know, there were some of those years when, I remember the state pulled back, what was it, 10%?
10% across the board, yeah.
Across the board. And those were some of those years and we still haven't caught up from, from all of that yet, so.
Correct.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Yeah, he was helpful.
Do a vote on this. Approve the publication scheduling of the public hearing for fiscal year 2019, 20 budget. And this is a voice vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same thing.
Good, thank you.
So moved. Next, we move to learning and leadership. We'll have an HR update by Linda Nagle and this is an information item only.
Good evening. Nice to see all of you. So I am going to be giving you an HR, whoops, I have to turn it the right way, as well, an HR update. As you know, that we periodically come to the board here and talk about where we're at from our goals and where we're at from a strategic perspective. So the five focus areas, I'm going to talk about the workforce this evening and give you just a couple of updates under this category here. So just as a reminder, from the workforce perspective, our goal is to build a highly engaged workforce. And two areas that I want to talk about this evening, one is around the workforce and some of our demographics around the workforce as well as our systems and some of the work that we're doing around evaluating our current HR payroll benefit and accounting systems. And then Joy is going to come up, she's right behind me, and give us an update on the diversity hiring and the work that we're doing around diversity. So that should be exciting. So I'm going to try something new that we've not tried before. We have a new software, and I shouldn't say we, because this is Angela and Matt, our wonder stars, and it's called Tableau. And what it is, is you can take a whole bunch of data and you dump it into the system and Matt and Angela work their magic and it produces these awesome kinds of reports and stuff for us. So we are going to, I'm going to show you some of those reports and some of that information that we have. And Justin, I'm missing my mouse. Oh, here it is. Okay, so this first tab is, or this first sheet here is just giving you some information on our workforce demographics. So this is probably not something that you've seen a lot of in the past. It's a starting point for us. It's not as robust as I'd like it to be and it doesn't include all the different pieces that we want it to look like in the future, but it is kind of a good starting point. And so when I think about HR and I think about what are some of the things that we should be keeping an eye on, what are some of the things that we need to pay attention to from an employee perspective, we're in the business of the employee, these are some of the ones that rise to the top. So one of the first things is you want to understand the demographics of your workforce. And so what you'll see here, this first chart is our headcount chart. And what you'll notice is 1,300 of our employees are in our teacher group. So the largest part of our employee base is our teachers. And then we have another 49 employees that are in our teacher associates. And so what that tells you is about 60% of our workforce is really, I mean, directly one-on-one with students between teachers and paras, so a good portion of our work group. This other big bucket here is all of our other positions and there's about 1,100 people in those positions. And that bucket is primarily made up of the transportation and our food nutrition are our largest percentages, followed by our secretary of custodial. So those are our top groups in, in those areas. And then after that, it's just nominal of the different groups that are in there. And then you can see here, from a administrator perspective, we're at 2.42% of our entire workforce. That's the headcount report. Then obviously we are looking at some baseline in regards to our ethnicity. And as you can see, and I don't think this is going to be a surprise for anyone, we are predominantly a white workforce today. However, oh, oh, don't do that to me. So you can see in our administrator, our administrator group has the largest, our largest population in regards to our diversity background, so they have the largest percent from a diversity background, followed by our teacher associates at 9.39%. And then our other positions are about 6.88%. As we've spent a lot of time talking about this year is our teachers and how do we get the workforce to match what our demographics are within our schools? And so again, no surprise to all of you as we've been having lots and lots of conversations about this, but this is the area, and these are so small, there we go. These are an area in which we have focus and which is why Joy is here to talk about the diversity plan and why you've invested in that and why we've been spending so much time and energy there. So we, we obviously know that we have some significant work to do here. And although some of these other groups are doing a little bit better, we're still quite short of where we want to be in our future state. So we kind of goes through that piece. And then also, you always do event, a gender chart as well. Again, you'll see a pretty nice mix here at the administrator level with 57% being male and 43% being female, by far the most mix that you see. So we, and we do believe things start from the top and kind of go down. So the teacher associates, you can then see, and then our teachers. So again, if you look at our teachers, we've got 25% male and 75% female. Again, what is the mix of our schools? What do our, what do our, what do we want to match in regards to our, our demographics? And then the last chart here, on this one, is just showing some attrition information. And the blue line here is the teacher attrition. So you can see that that's not a ton of movement. We've not seen a lot of change in regards to our teacher attrition. The orange line there then is the para attrition. And I think we're probably on track to maintain, we'll be within this range as we finish up this year as well. We don't see anything on the horizon that's going to increase that dramatically. And then this last group again is the other category. And once again, the big groups in there are your transportation and your food and nutrition positions.
Is that retirements or people that are just?
Yeah, it's all, anyone who's left the district, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. So those are just some preliminary kinds of things that we're starting to talk about, think about in regards to our demographics, attrition and other kinds of reporting that we want to do from an HR personnel perspective.
I have, I'd like some clarification, please. On the work group, when we're looking at administrators there, that 72, that number 72, does that include administrators for all departments, building and grounds, transportation? Thank you.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah. Very good. Okay, so then, any other questions on this one? Okay, so the other thing I wanted to talk to you about is I wanted to give you a little bit of an update on our sub, substitute situation. This is an area of focus for us this year as well. And this is a second update that I've provided you this year, but just kind of wanted to show you kind of where we're trending. Right now, for our teachers, the total leave that our teachers have taken is a little over 78,000 hours that they've been absent from the classroom. The top three reasons for that would be personal illness, family, you know, those types of things. Second to that then is family illness for, for things relating to their families. And then the last one is personal business. On average, we have about 104 teachers that are absent on any given day. And so what did we do about that, knowing that our absences are at that level? We brought, we put some different supports in this year around the full-time building subs. You can see here, last year we had 20, or I'm sorry, 18 full-time subs. This year we went to 37 full-time subs. We've also, so these are, the full-time subs are in the building every single day. They're utilized by their, their building and they're able to jump in and sub wherever is needed. In addition to this, we've added another 160 subs into SubCentral that work on a less than full-time basis. So they, they're the ones that we call in addition to what we've already got in the pool. So we've added quite a little bit of people in this pool and people that are available to, to sub. And I've got to go look at my notes because I got some. So what has that done? So from a fill rate, we're at 82.42%, which is about the same as where we have been. So it hasn't really significantly increased even though we've added additional resources in this area. So we went, well, why, why would that be? You would naturally think that your fill rate is going to increase because we added extra resources. So what we learned is that we have spent from 1718, we spent about $906,000. This year we spent $981 for an increase of about 75. Where we're seeing the, the savings is on the prep time subbing. So we've reduced the amount of time that we've had to pull teachers out from subbing or from prep time. So they've gained some of that time back and that's been about a $10,000 savings there. So this then leaves us with about a $65,000 of, okay, so we invested this, what are we getting from it? Well, what we're finding is that in our buildings, we have, or what we, what we are assuming is happening is we have about 11,000 hours that are not assigned, meaning that people are subbing somewhere, but we're not putting it in SubCentral. So we still have some behavior that we have to continue to work on and continue to help people understand why that's important. And so the idea is because we have these 11,000 hours that are out there, we probably have a little bit better of a sub rate here, fill rate than what's really being reflected. And it's not because they're not subbing, it's because of, they're just not getting it all into SubCentral. And I'm sure that's for some very, very good reasons in regards to just pulling people and getting them in the right places at the right time. So continuing our work around the sub tasking or the sub work that we're doing and continuing to identify what those needs are. And a couple of things that we are doing is making a very concentrated effort with our new grads as we have, Joy's going to talk a little bit about some of the amazing career fairs that they've gone to. And as we are talking to new grads, we're trying to get them into a sub pool. So we're, we're looking at doing that. We're also doing that for our paras as well. And so we're trying to get people to come in and do para subbing as we look at all these big pools that we have. And so looking a lot at the, that fall grad, fall grads and then people that are at our local colleges that are in school for teaching degrees, we're starting to engage with them and asking them if they want to do some subbing when they're not in class. So we've got some great initiatives that are going on around some of that to continue to raise our pool up. And I forgot to mention, because I know this always comes second to none and it's not on the slides here, but from the para population, we've added 59 new subs for the paras as well this year, so. So that's kind of it on some of the demographic stuff. I just wanted to sort of share that with you and kind of give you an idea of some of the things that we're kind of starting to think about.
Gary, yes?
I have a question. Going back to the subs. I'm a bit, I'm a little bit confused with the fact you said you've added, we've added a number of subs this year new to the SubCentral. And yet our, our unfilled position rate, fill rate is still staying pretty flat. You were saying, what I was hearing is that some of it is not being recorded, their, their buildings are filling in the subs. But again, to me, that's saying there still is, we still have a subset, is if teachers are, have to fill in for other teachers because they're absent. Is that what you were saying?
No, there's subs that are filling in for positions and then not recording that in SubCentral.
It's the subs that are not recording again.
Correct, correct.
Okay, all right.
Yep, and, and that's not to say we don't still have days that are, we have shortage because if you think about the full-time building subs, there's usually one or two. When we have a day that we have six or seven or eight people gone, they could have people that are not, that they can't fill all of those positions.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you said you have permanent subs, so they are there every day in the school. So teachers aren't pulled away, I mean, they are there ready to work.
Right. And if they're not, if there's not a role for them, this rarely, rarely happens, but if there isn't a role for them in that building, they do share them with other buildings. And we actually had 1,300 hours in which that happened, meaning that maybe I was at Jefferson and I wasn't needed at Jefferson, so I went over to Kennedy. So that happens occasionally as well.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, no, I appreciate this. This is, this is great information. I've talked to some teachers and a couple of administrators and they really appreciate having those permanent subs from what, from what I've heard. Obviously that's not everywhere, but I'm just wondering that, do you do some benchmarking with our other UEN districts on the total teacher leave taken? I mean, I just, it seems like a big number, but then again, we also have 1,300 teachers and does that also include paras or is that just teachers?
This one is just a teacher's one, yeah.
Just teachers.
And, and the reason I pulled out the teachers is because we were talking about the sub piece of it and I didn't do all the, the extra part on this paras. So I have not talked to UENs, but as I put all this data together, it came to my mind as well, because you know, the first question you always ask, so is that good or bad? I don't know right now. And so doing, looking into that and trying to understand, is that average? What is our benchmark? What, what should our benchmark be? Yep.
Yeah, that would be good too.
Yeah, it would, yeah.
So I have a couple of quick things, Linda. So first of all, I'm pretty happy and excited to see Tableau being used. I mean, that's dynamic reporting and actionable information that, you know, we can see and pull out of there and do something with. So that's pretty cool that it's available and presentable for us to be able to look at. Would you go back to the headcount and demographics really quick? And maybe, John, you know, with your involvement at the University of Iowa, Dr. Buck, maybe you can help me with this. Or Linda, you might know the answer. So when we look at the headcount by race and ethnicity, headcount by gender, do those percentages match what, you know, either students graduating from college, like in our area universities, does it correlate? Do they match? Does it look similar? So students that are coming out, would you know?
So that, on the teacher education side, that would match probably pretty darn, pretty darn close. It's, yeah. The universities have been having this discussion lately and this is this whole K20 pipeline discussion. And I think there are some opportunities and I know Joy, you're going to talk about it and I'll jump right in then, but yeah, there, there are some things out there and we pass along some best practices and I know that that's where we're going and why you're on board with us, so.
But I agree, Rafael. I mean, my question was if, if our ratios match the College of Education graduating ratios for race and gender, then how can we improve that? Because if that is.
You can improve it.
But if, if, if the graduating class is that, I mean, it's, there's, I, that, that's of interest to me.
So there's a couple of things and I don't want to steal any of Joy's thunder, but what I would say is as we're looking at our state universities, part of what we have to do is get involved, they all have diversity committees, diversity groups, et cetera. And so we have to get involved with those and understand what that really looks like. And we want to be the employer of choice. So when, when, when people are graduating, we want them to, to think. So when, when, when people are graduating, we want them to, to think of Cedar Rapids. And so that's one piece. And then the second part is thinking outside of Iowa. And so we, we've got to look at schools outside of Iowa that have more diverse populations and, you know, talk with those individuals as well.
Well, and I'll wait until Joy does hers, but my question too is, what are we doing in the classroom to, to get students interested to go into that so that we're changing that?
Into teaching?
We're changing that makeup in the schools that are teaching the, and sending them in?
And, and I don't want to again steal Joy's thunder, but...
She's like, my presentation is done!
Come on, just come up to the front, Joy, come on!
You know, these are some of the most competitive admissions programs that we have in higher education. They're very specialized. I mean, that's why you have to have licensure as a teacher to teach in these areas. And so we need students coming into the colleges and universities with these programs that can meet the admission standards to succeed, to be able to pass certifications and those sorts of things. So it's not just like you can get kids interested, they've got to academically be prepared. And that's as big of a pipeline issue as just getting kids interested, maybe more.
It's, it's working with them to give them the skills and abilities. The possibilities are exciting, aren't they?
We're looking outside of Iowa too. I mean, there, there's surrounding areas too that have education, all of it.
But to have, ultimately, what, to have quantifiable data in this area where we haven't before, I think, is wonderful. We could, we're no longer speculating, we, we have that data now.
We know. It's nice.
Yeah, it's exciting, it's exciting. And it's all a system. I mean, all of this is a system and so all of this comes together when you talk about recruiting and retention. It's all the plan, you know, to get us where we need to. And so, and you're leading right into my next slide that I want to go into.
We're glad we could help you with that.
Yes, I love it! You guys are just prompting me, this is fantastic. So this is in regards to our system update. So you might recall that one of the things that we're looking at from, from our area is a possible new system within HR. And I'll go through all the reasons for that, but one of them is this topic that we're talking about. So when we pull all this data in our current system today, I'm going to tell you, it's brutal. It's painful, it's stressful, it's taxing, it's a lot of time that people have to go spend and pull all this stuff from different things, et cetera, et cetera. We should have an HR system that we can do much easier, streamlined and much more efficient than we have today. So I want to talk just a little bit about where we're at on our journey of looking at a system. So Dave Nicholson and Sarah Brown and our teams have been working to identify some potential software vendors. We've looked at a few of them, we narrowed it down to two right now, Infinite Visions and eFinance. We've had approximately three meetings with them so far and realized that we need to have many more, or at least a few more. And where we're at right now is, we've all got to see the system. So we've kind of gotten that sales pitch and now we need to dig in and really understand what it is that these systems can do. But let me kind of back up for a minute and give you just why are we doing this? So we've been with Grant Wood for a number of years and Grant Wood has been great to us. I mean, they've done a lot of good work for us and we, we get some really good support from them. But they will admittedly also say Cedar Rapids is too complex and too big for their systems today. And there's other systems that are out there that would serve us better. So, and one of the big pain points for us is that there's no integration between HR, payroll, accounting, all of these different things, there's no, there's no integration. And so what that means is a lot of labor-intensive processing. And things aren't streamlined and they're not efficient. And in many, many cases, a entry, somebody has to touch just to get it into the HR system four different times. So there's a lot of, lots of errors, lots of room for data entry integrity issues to come up. The other thing is, it doesn't have a good employee self-service functionality for our employees. I mentioned it's not built to, to handle some of the complex records that we have. Lots of manipulation that we have to do whenever we do compliance. And there's very limited reporting and there's no analytics. So what gets us excited about a new system, the opposite of all those things. So the big thing here is the integration across our business, all of our business. We're talking about things in which an employee comes in as a brand-new employee. So think about the life cycle of an employee. I apply for a job, from the time they apply, that record is created and it goes all the way through the system. And so when we go in to put them into HR, there's information that all flows in there. We verify that information, we put in a few new fields. Payroll does what they need to do and it continues through the flow. Super exciting. What I'm probably more excited about is that the experience for our employees will be phenomenal. They will have a system in which they can self-serve and get all of the information that they need. So in our world, teachers often need to know what their certifications are, what their transcripts are, what their resume is, credits, all of these things that they need to get at their fingerprints, or fingertips. And HR has always been the, the person, the group that's had those and they've been in paper files, thousands and thousands and thousands of paper files. We, all that's going to be electronic going forward. So the complete automation, super easy to use, all their payroll information, their W-2s, their tax stuff, their direct deposit, everything. Everything will be, the employee will be able to get all the information that pertains to them as an individual, as it should be. We will have the benefit of having a full life cycle system. So from the very time that they come in as a candidate, all the way through termination and all the tracking and reporting and everything that you want to know about that life cycle through that system will be available to us. For our administrators, they might not like it at first. We will be doing a position control process, which basically means you're tying people to positions. So from a budget perspective, I can't hire a position if that position doesn't exist. But the, what they will come to appreciate, I think, is that they are the, everything starts with the administrator. So every time an employee moves, every time there's a building change, every time I need to add somebody, every time I need to do anything within my building, I fill out the information and it all flows through the system. Today, we do much of that work through email. And if you can imagine how, how that can cause some issues for us. So, very intentional workflows as we move through this process. I'm also excited about the ability to handle complex employee records. We are complex. Cedar Rapids is complex. Iowa is complex. And just being able to add lines, if somebody wants to be a teacher and they want to be a para and they want to be a Schedule C and they want to be a bus driver, today to do that is like, phew, crazy, crazy, poor Carla and her team. But in future state, they can do that. And so we'll add more flexibility for our work, our staff and they'll be able to do even more for us. And then, compliance reporting, that's a big one. And that's one of the areas in which we have to work with the two vendors right now because compliance is a big deal for us. Iowa has some complexity around compliance. And so we're kind of working with them to truly understand if they can, they can do everything that we need them to do there. And talked about the workforce reporting and analytics will be great. And then, the other thing that we're measuring against the new system is what kind of support can we expect through the, through the integration and then afterwards? So, these are kind of some big requirements that we're looking at. Our next step right now is each of the groups are kind of working on their top five things that we must have. And we'll start working through some further conversations around that, so.
Do either of them present you with options for baselining?
Tell me a little more.
So, like John was asking before.
Benchmarking stuff?
Benchmarking and giving you some information. Do, do, have, has that been brought up in their presentations? The ability for them to provide de-identified statistics and stuff for you for comparative reasons?
Yeah, so we haven't probably, we haven't spent enough time yet on the workforce reporting and the analytics piece. We've seen the flash, you know, we've seen the demo, but we haven't dived in, we haven't dove into really what does that look like and what will we actually get? I think that's a, I think that's a good question for us to be asking them. Yeah. That's what I typically see with systems, is there's some benchmarking? And, and we've, Dave and Sarah Brown, Sarah Brown's actually been really leading a lot of this work in regards to getting all the logistics and connections and that type of thing. And we've talked to some schools already that have used the two systems to kind of get some feedback that way and actually plan on, Carla had a great idea today, of going out and meeting one-on-one with some of the schools too.
Question about this. Currently, is a lot of this going through Grant Wood AEA?
Correct.
And through their database?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So we have, the district has been challenged for a long time with that system. And I remember at one point, there was discussion about going in this direction. It was very, very expensive software to purchase. With the K, with that in mind, a couple of things. Can we use Pebble to purchase the software and not come out of general fund?
If we can.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, you know, I know, yes, you can use it for non-instructional software. And so it's Pebble and Save, we can use them for non-instructional software purchases. So that's, you know, where, you know, a lot of that. The piece that may not be able to come out would be the implementation component of it, but the ongoing software component. And, you know, there might be an opportunity because we have so many add-ons with regard to the Grant Wood software to try to help pieces. Believe it or not, there's a potential that it might actually be a cheaper solution.
Okay.
Because of all the add-ons that we have done over the years to try to fit, so.
I, I'm not opposed to it at all. I know the tremendous amount of frustration that when I was sitting on the other side in the bargaining and things that we couldn't do because Grant Wood couldn't, just couldn't do it. Things that were beneficial to employees and so on. It was, it was very, very frustrating. Will we be able to cut our own checks? I think, will that be a part of it? It used to, I mean, again, those were all done through Grant Wood AEA. And I think, again, that caused a lot of frustration about payroll and, and those things.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to cutting.
You know, we have been able to cut checks for quite a while now with Grant Wood. But there are some things that we're currently doing. We actually have a separate system called KEV where all of our middle, activity funds use. And that's a separate system that we're having to pull in data into. And so, we would be able to actually run everything through the one system and not have to have a separate system for the activity funds.
It's been a while since I've been directly involved with that. But I, I know that it was, in some cases, trying and an extra, having to distribute an extra check or something like that. And it was like, in order to reprogram AEA, it was long drawn out and couldn't be done and so on. So that was the purpose of that question, thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate, I think Grant Wood has, has been fantastic. We've enjoyed our relationship with them. You know, the system, we've just outgrown the system. So we, we've just gotten too big and too complex and we have too many other things, too many work groups and all of that kind of stuff that it just makes it a little bit more challenging for them. But we, but we've definitely appreciated the relationship that we've had with them for the many years that we've had.
Yeah, I didn't want to, I'm not intending to addition on AEA.
Not at all.
They were trying to meet the needs of all natural.
Absolutely.
And again, it just got very complex.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Just to tag on what Linda said. You know, that's one of the things that will challenge us a little bit with a new system is that the customer support level that we have received from Grant Wood, second to none. There's, they've been fabulous, the customer support, and that's not the personal attention. Going to new softwares, you may not, probably not going to have that same level of attention that we have had from Grant Wood for the customer support level. And we understand that. I mean, that's one of the things that Grant Wood is great on with the customer support and the personal attention.
Sometimes we're our worst enemies because we create a lot of customization and then you don't really remember why years later. And when you go to a full suite service like this, they're very intentional about those upgrades and when they do them, how they do them and how they report out. So it actually is a protection for us. Yeah.
Is it cloud-based or server-based? Just out of curiosity.
We actually probably have the ability to do either or.
Oh, wow. So that impacts your security approach to it?
Mm-hmm. Good. So, very good, okay. So, what you really want to hear about is, you really want to talk to Joy. And I know she's anxious to talk with all of you as well, so I will turn it over to her.
Good evening and I, I'm excited that everyone was really excited about the diversity initiatives and you were already going into it and I had to hold myself back like, oh no, we still got some things to cover tonight. So, I appreciate that. Tonight, I'm just going to share what we've developed as far as our diversity and retention, or diversity recruitment and retention efforts and strategies in the HR department. We've been working really, really hard and doing a lot of work. But I'm only going to share a couple of things because we would be here a long time if I went really into detail. But of course, if you have any questions about anything, just feel free to go ahead and ask myself or Linda any questions, so. So, we've noticed that pretty much all the work that we're doing either fell into one of these four pillars. And that's either community outreach, recruitment, talent pipelines, or grow-your-own programming. And, and when you were talking about if the demographic of what we're graduating from the College of, Colleges of Education doesn't, is pretty close to what we see in our school districts, how do we move that needle, so to speak? The answer is your grow-your-own programming. So I'll go a little more into detail once we get there. And then lastly, we can do all the work that we want to attract talent here, to develop and grow your own talent. But if we don't set up some systems as far as retaining them, then we've kind of done it for naught. And so we wanted to make sure that that was one of the pillars of our strategy as well. So, I'm going to go ahead and go into the community outreach. Mike, that spoke earlier from the Master Planning Committee, he talked about telling the story and that it was important that not just the district understood the story, but that the community had buy-in as well. And I believe that this particular bullet, the community outreach pillar, that's what that's about. It's about telling the story so that not only does the district believe in our initiative, but that people in the community understand what the benefit of doing this is as well. And so, the objective is to develop and strengthen positive relations with our community. And I'm just going to highlight a couple key things that we've done. One of the first meetings we took this quarter would be to establish a relationship and working pipeline with Iowa Works or Iowa Workforce Development. Now, you would think that that kind of would be a natural thing and they were aware of a lot of our openings. But typically, we post our positions on Teach Iowa and not with their Iowa jobs. And so I asked pointedly, would there be some benefit? Because I know typically you might not think that there's actually people there. But she said, yeah, Joy, we, you have to think, if we have principals and administrators and teachers coming into Iowa, one of the first places they're referred to is Iowa Workforce Development. So if you guys aren't giving us your, your openings, you know, they'll go to Teach Iowa, but this is a direct communication. And so we now are doing that, we now are working with them to make sure not only do they have our openings, but also we send each other emails directly. So if they have a candidate that comes in, if the candidate has just made, touched bases with them, they will go ahead and send me and Alyssa, the other recruiter, over that information and vice versa. We've had some great positions and great openings, ranging from our para-professionals all the way up to our administrative positions that we are sending out to them and then they funnel them out to all their connections as well. So that's been a really, really good relationship that we've established for the community as a whole. And then another one I'd like to highlight is, and first I need to turn my page. I start talking and I don't, I stay where I'm at. Another one we've been working with is Inclusive ICR. Formerly, you probably knew Inclusive ICR as the Employee Resource Group Consortium. Well, now they're called Inclusive ICR. And what they are is a coalition of local employers and organizations that work together to support and grow inclusion and diversity in our workforce. And so this has been a great collaboration as well because we can share best practices and we can share ideas. And so, that's been a really, really good connection. And working with them as well, they have given us a lot of ideas about retaining people. And I'll touch, they have some other programs underneath them that we work with as well to really help retain talent in our area. And then, another big one, we, we build a network with Troops to Teachers too because we know that Iowa, the certification process can be a little tedious sometimes for out-of-state applicants coming in. But there is an alternative pathway to teaching for military people. And not only is there an alternative pathway for teaching, but there is, they are a protected class group as well. So, we actually have some veterans that will be graduating soon with teaching endorsements and they're going to be coming to our upcoming career fair, which is on the next slide. And not only are they coming to that, they are... And not only are they coming to that, they are now directly sending our HR department applications and making a really, you know, just making sure we are in the loop and also posting our positions on their website as well. If I'm a veteran and I'm looking to return back to Iowa, then I can go to Troops to Teachers or I can contact that actual person and get information regarding, um, openings with the school district. So, really excited about that. And then, of course, um, a, a large component of our program is the recruiting aspect. And the objective of that is to hire and quietly, uh, highly qualified, engaged and diverse workforce. And so, we wanted to really push up our recruiting efforts and make sure that we had a real good, strong presence in the community. Um, for this quarter, by the end of March, we ha- we will have attended six career fairs already, and one of those are out of state. Um, Ms. Nancy, you talked about developing those out-of-state pipelines. We are beginning to do that. We are taking looks at schools that would be a great collaborative effort with us. Um, I was at Western Illinois, and the good thing about that, they are a very diverse community, but they are right next to Iowa, right? So, there's no surprises with the snow and the weather. They know, they know what they're getting into. And so it was a good thing as well, because I actually asked them, well, how many of your students actually come over and work at Iowa? And they have quite a lot of students that do come over and work with Iowa. And they are definitely interested in forming that, um, relationship with us as well. When we were at the career fair, she said typically, Joy, um, most of our students already had their contracts, but this year we don't. So, it's good that we are making contacts so that as students are graduating from their, um, graduating and finishing their student teaching opportunities, they are now interested in coming into Cedar Rapids and working. And I also want to talk about the ICR Talent Hub, because this is, um, another thing that ICR does and we are partnering with them on. Basically, when there's talent looking to come into our area, they actually, um, send all of the p- the businesses that are in the Talent Hub, people's information. And we have already hired off of that as well. When we talked about the sub shortage and filling those gaps, we recently hired a permanent sub based off of this collaboration with the ICR Talent Hub. So, and I see much more of that coming in the future. And I'll touch on them again too, because they are a great retention tool as well. I mean, if we hire an administrator and he's bringing his wife or she's bringing her husband, it's great to have a network of people that I can say, and say it confidently, I think we can find something for you. I think that we'll be able to get your spouse a, a career here as well. So, and I'll touch on that a little bit more in retention, but we are working with that too. And then, um, March 30th, we have our upcoming rescheduled teacher career fair, and we've been really, really pushing that at all the career fairs we've attended. I mean, people would come up to our booth and we were like, we want to see you, we want to talk to you. We will have openings for our new grads. And so, we were already, as of the end of last week, at a hundred and twenty-plus qualified candidates that'll be interviewing, and that's larger than last year. And, um, but we're expecting to be more. I mean, as of today, I know Alyssa, I didn't have that number because she's still working on that and signing people up for interviews. So people are really excited about coming to the district and seeing what we have to offer on March 30th. So, and anybody wants to check it out, definitely do, so. And again, this is, this is where we kind of change that demographic and what it looks like to make our, uh, workforce look more close to what our actual community looks like. Um, and this is where you develop your talent pipelines. I'm excited about this one too. We are currently working with Mount Mercy and Co. College to develop, uh, what would be called a teacher academy. And so this would be starting with kids once they get into high school and, and introducing them to the business of education as well. So, we're really, really excited about that. I mean, we have a live here, learn here, teach here catchphrase that somebody coined. We haven't necessarily decided on that yet, but we are just really gearing up to be excited and give kids a good portion to that. Um, on top of that, we already offer some dual credit opportunities. So what we're doing is working with the academies that already exist via Kirkwood to strengthen marketing strategies and really get kids involved in those as well. I mean, we have these great opportunities, but we're going to, me and Tara, when you don't know Tara, she's absolutely wonderful, but she's over the academies. And we are working on ways that we can do some actual targeted marketing to kids, as you said, that we can attract them into the business of education and being teachers. Because if I'm a kid and I, you just say, would you like to be a teacher? Sometimes they don't know. But if we do some things and bring in some great people like yourselves to talk about how important it is to be a teacher in our community, that can really influence them. So we're really excited about that. And we're also working on a teacher mentor program, um, that specifically works with minority teachers in, around, um, the Cedar Rapids area. And we've already got a mentee. She's from Co. College, well, she goes to Co. College, she's in her sophomore year, and she's from Chicago originally, and she's already decided that she wants to teach here in Cedar Rapids, right? And so it's our job to keep her here and make sure that she has ties and things to the community. And so, we are working on doing more things like that as well as, as kids are coming here and going to school here, making sure that they feel good about the community that they're now a part of. And so, and of course, the goal is that we want to reduce that gap and that ratio of teachers of color and the student body in the district. And lastly, we can talk about retention. Um, it's really, really, really important. And so, a part of retention is we're working on a diversity HR statement to be a part of the complete hiring process as we're bringing out these new systems. We've done, we did some meetings and some, um, small focus groups and talked to people about their experience with hiring through us. And we found out this was something that they, they really thought would be important because they, districts that they consider in the past had this through the beginning to the end of that process. And so right now, I have a meeting, Rod, and all of us are getting together to work on what that statement would be and make sure that we are consistently saying the same thing and letting them know how important diversity and inclusion is for our district. And then also, um, I touched on ICR earlier a little bit with the, uh, family support program, and it's called a wingman program. And so what happens is, a lot of times, what we found, people would leave our area because they didn't necessarily have that sense of community. And so this program is about connecting people with community as well. And so we're really, really excited about that. Um, recently, we had, uh, an applicant, uh, applicant that they were coming onto the community. And so, and I contacted the wife and I said, hey, we really want you here. We're excited about the opportunity for both of you to be here, not just the employee, but we're excited about the family and the kids and everyone as well. And so I was able to share some of this information that we have. I actually go to my wingman training tomorrow morning at, um, the Chamber Building. And so it's really exciting. People are like, when, when I had that, um, interaction with the wife, she said, wow, Joy, I really appreciate you guys reaching out and you guys letting us know that you really want here. Even if we don't decide to come there, I would consider you guys for the future because just you reached out and made that extra little step. So, we're making sure that we are just really doing things to make us look like an inclusive, look like the inclusive district that we are. And, um, last one I'll touch on is, we want to enhance the student-teacher experience. We're really fortunate. We have a really good onboarding process for our new teachers right now. I believe there's like a year that Grant Wood AEA does training and things like that. And we are just working that we can push that even to the, the limit. I mean, Connie has kind of, we've talked to another state that has a really robust program, and they're mentoring us on how we can develop ours as well. So we're just really excited about that. Let's see here. And then, um, after doing all of that, these are some of the next steps we're going to have. We're going to, we want to really maximize our current social media marketing efforts so that once we have that diversity statement, we're making sure people see that and they understand what that means to the district. Um, there's a NICE grant we're applying for with Mount Mercy and Co., well, they're actually applying for it, but it's to benefit our students, so we're just giving them information. Uh, we want to identify best recruiting and sourcing methods for the district and recreate a recruiting budget. We also, I talked a little bit about that, is organize actual student recruiting event. Um, roughly, we're thinking fall 2019 where we can actually start talking to students about being a part of the academy for 2020. We want to build our out-of-state recruitment program, and I put Aldine Texas there because they're kind of serving as one of our mentor districts to talk about how to develop a really robust out-of-state program that really makes a difference. And, uh, again, that marketing future-ready teacher academy and that rollout strategy. And then we just, we just are planning to continue to work to reduce barriers for our candidates and our employees. And by the end of these next steps, um, Linda and I are planning on working together as well to establish our metrics for our diversity hiring goals. Because as you said, we now have a starting point, but to know where we're going, we have to have an idea about where those goals are at, so we have direction. And so we're going to begin working on that as well, so. And I think that's it, but if anyone has any questions for me?
You guys have been busy.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, very aggressive. Glad to see that this is taking place.
Thank you.
I know it's a lot of work, but it's a benefit for all in our district.
And it's exciting just to actually be able to provide those opportunities for kids.
Right.
And when I was at Washington for the African History Month program, just watching the talented kids and how excited they were. And it's like, because sometimes when you come to work, you're going to work and you think about it for a job, but when you actually are with the kids, you're like, okay, this is what we're doing and this is why we're here. So, that's a good feeling, so.
Jo, uh, a couple of comments. Joy, thank you for, uh, I really liked the direction. I liked the personal contact that you made. I think that's one of the things that, uh, it isn't just one hire, but it's the family that we were bringing into the district. I think that will really help, uh, go a long way with retention. A, a comment about the, the, the teacher, um, um, grow your own. Uh, I have a, a real personal belief, because that's how I got into teaching, was being a, a teacher as a teenager, um, through swimming lessons and so on. It's that it really, when I could see what I could do to another individual, be able to see them progress. So, I think it's a great way of getting, uh, students, particularly minority students or any students involved with the teaching profession, if we could get them at high school, getting them volunteering or somehow with the, into the elementary school and, and see that they can have an impact in someone else's life, I think it really instills in them, uh, a, a great opportunity. And the last, I, I just couldn't go away from this presentation without, and I'm not tooting my own horn here, but I was coordinator for teacher mentoring and induction.
Nice.
When I worked with the district. And we had a, we had a state and nationally recognized program. Um, and it went away. Uh, I won't go into the specifics, but specifics, but we really did have, and I think it had a great impact on retention, retention of teachers and also them being very effective. So, uh, at some point, maybe I'll sit down with you and just share some of the things that went on, so.
Thank you, Gary. I would, I would love to do that, because I agree. I was surprised at the career fairs that there were a lot of young, even sophomores that are just entering into the, their college of education, and they were asking about, what does your teacher mentoring look like upon graduation? So, they're hungry for it. So I would love to sit with you and talk about that and make sure we're giving them what they're, we have a great program currently, but of course, great things can always be better, so. Thank you.
I have a question. Um, first of all, thank you for all this work. It's tremendous, um, and much needed, so appreciate it very much. Thank you. Um, I have a question about, so if we're looking at creating a more welcoming and inclusive environment, are we using those IDI scores to kind of, when we're looking at that, how that would work in a building or as a, as a system?
Yeah, I'd take that one. I, I do think that the IDI of helping us understand where our mindset is around culture in each of those buildings is really important to this work. Uh, making sure that our staff understands where they are and is continuing to grow their intercultural mindset, um, which is, I think, some of the work that we're going to do together on developing those diversity statements so people really understand what we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you.
So I'd like to thank the board for your leadership on this. So you cast a vision for this work, uh, a couple of years ago, and we were able to repurpose some funds in HR to, uh, change the emphasis that, uh, in a really important way. And so what we're seeing tonight through the hard work of Joy and Linda and the team is, uh, what's flowing out of that, uh, vision cast from the board. So thank you for, uh, your leadership on this, and hopefully what you're hearing here is in line with the kinds of things you were hoping would, uh, come out of, uh, that vision cast when you did it a couple of years ago, so.
It does, and I, again, back to the academic side of it, you guys are providing great leadership, and I don't think we could ask for much more at this point. You're obviously really into this. But, you know, it's, it's in the classrooms and, and working with those students one-on-one, and we know that it's, it's hard work, there's teachers in the audience. But, you know, uh, to get the students that we're talking about up to the academic ability levels in math and their communication skills level so that they can, first of all, get into the four-year universities, they have to get into a four-year program, and then they have to get into a, um, education track that meets all these certifications, it, you know, that, that's an academic challenge and rigor, um, that not some of our students can meet. And so anything that we can do and how important that is to work with those students in that classroom level, to get through the social, social, emotional stuff and, you know, to have stability at home, you know, all the work that we're doing on that, that's why we're doing. This is one example in teaching, right? But, you know, folks in, uh, in engineering and in hospitals and in social work and all over the place, they're looking for that same skill set. And so, um, you know, there, there's no magic to all of this, but I think working together. And that's one of the things too, you know, the NAACP and others are bringing together people in the community to talk about some of these issues. Um, the SET Task Force Program and the grant program for the Cedar Rapids Community Foundation has some new opportunities. And I think, you know, realizing, I really appreciated the articles in the, in the Gazette this week, and, um, you know, this isn't just the school district, this is the community. And so everything that we can do to get the community to support this and understand that, you know, these kids are in our buildings for what, six, eight hours a day at most, and...
I really appreciate those comments, Director Laverty. And just one more thing, and Dr. Buck already highlighted this, we are on the eve of the first true commitment to access for all, pre-ACT, ACT tomorrow for every single sophomore and junior in our district. So thank you for supporting that effort. And those efforts, kids are going to benefit from that opportunity, because it has been a hidden opportunity for many of our underserved kids who don't believe or don't pursue. We say the choice is there, and there are even waivers for kids on free and reduced lunch, but putting it in front of them with the adults who they see every day and, and that they know will give them that access of support. So, that true is the vision of this board, and thank you.
I think it's wonderful, because I think it's helping the kids to, showing them that we believe in you, you believe in yourselves. And I, one thing I want to say is, you thanked us. I want to thank you because your passion for this and the effort and the things that we're seeing is evident. Um, that it, it's not just a paper exercise. It's, it, it is evident that you believe in what you're saying and that there's movement. Um, that's reassuring to me, um, as a, as a board member, to, to know that you believe in it as well. Because I think that'll carry through to help to the students too.
And also understanding it's the community.
Right.
We're all in this together.
Right.
And it's good that we're collaborating and we're moving forward. And we are making a difference and will continue to make a difference in this district. So, uh, kudos to you guys. You guys are working hard. And to you guys out here, because I know you put a lot into the work that you do, and it's for our, our children, our students in the school district. And thank you, Dr. Buck, too.
Yeah, you know, I, that's exactly where I thought we were going, is every learner is ready! And then I thought, I was like, passion, pathway, and a plan, right? Here's pathways, I love the pathways.
And I love the logo.
In fact, Kate, I'm here, it's worth all in. Yeah.
Learn here, live here, teacher, I love that.
That is nice.
Do you like it?
I like that.
Tara did that, but thank, the lea- uh, leadership has just been great. Linda's been wonderful about being supportive and talking about ideas. And I get so excited, I'm, I'm very a visual visionary, and so she'll back me down, okay, you need to explain that step by step. I understand you've been in it, I need you to come out.
Tell me how you're going to do it.
Yeah, she does, she does. I really appreciate that though, because I'm like...
It's awesome.
So thank you very much for everything, and I just appreciate all your support as well.
Thank you. Well, the last thing that we have is everybody gather your notes and, uh, get your school calendars and the meeting is adjourned.
One, one quick note on the school calendar. Jefferson's graduating twice.
Pretty good.
Yeah.
Next level.
Yeah.